room for newer, larger aircraft like the Airbus A380. But neighborhood residents aren't on board. That's because separation would also push one of those runways closer to neighborhoods. Residents fearing increased air pollution, street traffic, and Airport Commission Vice President Valeria Velasco demonstrating by tape recorder how noisy air traffic gets from inside her home in Playa del Rey. And that's with her windows closed. So she voted no, saying movement of the runway closer to houses would worsen things.
Of course, I do care about safety. But I balance that with the high health, the high health risk of daily impacts of pollution and noise to the 50,000 men, women, and children who live, study, and work in Playa del Rey in Westchester.
L.A. City Councilman Bill Rosendahl also opposes movement of the runway citing a 2010 North Airfield study stating the runway is safe where it is. The plan still needs the approval of the L.A. City Council before it goes forward. Outside City Hall, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Separation of the northern runways would cost about $750 million. A handful of officers in one LAPD division received special recognition after they put themselves in harm's way in order to stop an armed man from inflicting any more bloodshed.
Eric Molinado, Eric, jump up here right now. Big hand. Peter Cabral, Peter, come up here right now.
Those two officers were among several officers from the Olympic Community Police Station being recognized by Councilmember Tom Labonge.
November 1st, 2012, these officers were actually going out doing a hide, lock, and keep it to keep our property crimes down when this call went out at this office building in Koreatown.
The officers quickly showed up at the shooting in the 3440 block of Wilshire Boulevard, where an armed suspect had opened fire on someone inside the building.
When we got into the building, we could smell the gun smoke and people were under the desks and they were running out of the office building and we saw the suspect over the victim with a gun.
A tragic incident, but one that is being heralded as a heroic day for the LAPD.
We did lose one person that day, but because of their actions, I believe, and I personally believe that, that they saved several lives that day. When they took him into custody, they believed that he was reloading his weapon at that point in order to take more lives that day.
While this act of bravery was recognized in a public way, the honorees themselves say that's never the motivation for what they do out on the streets.
This award is very humbling and this award, it belongs to all the men and women of the police, of Los Angeles Police Department, who go to calls every single day to keep this city safe.
Police say the shooting, which claimed the life of one individual, was prompted by a business dispute. Parents of students at one low-performing school attempt to use California law to turn their campus into a charter school, but this three-year-old ruling has faced roadblocks in Southern California in the past. Gil Reyes reports from the West Adams District.
With banners in hand, these parents are demanding changes at 24th Street School south of downtown.
I shouldn't have to bus my kids out to the valley and find a school out there just to get a better education.
Parents want to turn their neighborhood campus into a charter school, hoping to improve the education of their kids, many of whom can't read at grade level. Helping them is 2010's Parent Trigger Law. It allows parents to take over failing schools if they gather enough signatures. They have. 68% of parents had signed the petition demanding change into a charter school. L.A.'s mayor also supports this.
Why? Because we empower parents on their rights, roles, and responsibilities. Why? Because we set high standards.
24th Street Elementary is just the third campus in the entire country to attempt to use the Parent Trigger Law. It's legal in several other states, but this is the first known case at the L.A. Unified School District. Two previous attempts to use Parent Trigger in California at Compton and Adelanto School Districts have been blocked by legal challenges. An advantage for 24th Street is support from the L.A. School Board, building expectations that other L.A. schools can apply Parent Trigger and succeed.
And there will be more. I understand the teachers' union has embraced this too, and that's a good thing. Because ultimately, we want to do this together. But if we have to, we will do this alone.
In this instance, the teachers' union, UTLA in particular, deserves real credit. We have not seen the level of harassment and intimidation that we've seen in previous efforts. We don't see them protesting this press conference today.
Changing into a charter school means many current teachers could be let go, but so far, no challenges from the teachers' union. 24th Street could be operating as a charter as early as September. In the West Adams District, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The L.A. School Board voted unanimously to uphold the parents' request for charter school status. We reported last week on the city's first so-called parklet in Highland Park. And one week later, the first downtown parklets, two of them, have also been officially unveiled. As Cindy San Luis reports, these projects are meant to make Los Angeles more pedestrian-friendly and to help create a sense of community.
Downtown's first public parklets have sprung up on Sixth and Spring Streets in the historic core.
It builds community and it makes streets safer and it helps local businesses.
Parklets are temporary extensions of the sidewalk and provide seating and recreational space that is open to anyone who chooses to sit, relax, or socialize.
I think this is great, you know, I mean, I think a lot, you know, downtown L.A. has become more of a walking community and it encourages people just to come out and be, be, be out and about.
The openings are part of a council District 14 Pilot Parklet Program through the L.A. Department of Transportation, also known as L.A. DOT. The first one opened earlier in the month in Highland Park. The last of the four in El Serino.
There must have been a foosball fan in the neighborhood to want to have a foosball table here.
I just threw it out there as an idea. They wanted to be an active parklet, so I was thinking, I like foosball, have a foosball. And it just stayed in the plans.
For the Spring Street Parklets, the Downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council Complete Streets Working Group created concepts and designs with the support of Council District 14 and L.A. DOT. Parklets are often called outdoor living rooms or mini plazas and have been fully embraced in other major cities like San Francisco and New York City. But this one here in downtown L.A. on Spring Street isn't just for lounging.
This is the first parklet in the nation that is an active recreation parklet that invites people not only to sit and to have a good time, but also to exercise and to be healthy.
Parklets like this continue to revolutionize and revitalize downtown Los Angeles and the city of L.A., transforming a city that is known for its traffic into something more pedestrian-friendly. I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. this week.
From parks the size of a parking space to parks that are a little bit bigger, we go to South Los Angeles where one so-called pocket park is in the works. This one, the Wall Street Park, is part of the city's 50 Parks Initiative. And as Anna Marcos shows us, it's bringing Mother Earth back where urban decay used to exist.
Here's what a blighted house going down looks like. The foreclosed home had been a neighborhood eyesore. There were even bullet holes on the walls, but now the blight is about to go green. It's all part of the city's 50 Parks Initiative, a plan to turn nuisance properties and empty urban lots into pocket parks in the city's most urban neighborhoods.
This house has been hurting the neighborhood for some time now. It's been empty, it's been broken down, it hasn't helped this neighborhood, it's making things worse, not better, and we're going to make things better, not worse.
Students from South Park Elementary who came to watch the demolition couldn't be happier.
I always see swings, I like the swings. I just play on the equipment.
What can I say? It can be nice for the kids, especially for the kids. They have somewhere to go.
So far, the city has opened seven new pocket parks under the 50 Parks Initiative, with an eighth one coming soon, and several more, like this future park, on the way.
We are designing this around the environment. We're designing it about energy conservation. We're designing it around groundwater retention. We're designing it using local plants. So when you come here, not only is it a park, it's really ecologically, it's part of your community.
A little concrete hacking and this neighborhood eyesore is about to grow into something healthy for the community. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
A museum here in the city receives a half a century-long lease agreement. Could there be another half-cent sales tax on the horizon? And a local community celebrates the renovation and reopening of a much-needed grocery store. These stories and more in City Beat. The Los Angeles City Council has unanimously approved a long-term pact with the Chinese-American Museum located at El Pueblo de los Angeles Historic Monument. The agreement clears the way for the Chinese-American Museum to operate for the next 50 years at the city site. Councilman Jose Wezar, who represents the district that encompasses El Pueblo, called the Chinese-American Museum "an important part of El Pueblo's storied history." There are plans in the works to add 12,000 square feet of new space for exhibits and programs. Mayor Antonio Villaregoza is endorsing a half-cent sales tax measure on the March ballot. Proposition A is expected to generate more than $200 million a year. A report by the city administrative officer who supports the measure predicted as many as 500 police officer jobs could be on the chopping block if Proposition A is defeated, and that the city's projected deficit of about $216 million could rise to $360 million. But opponents contend the tax would be bad for local businesses and hurt cash-strapped residents. More than $4 million in grant funding remains available for would-be homebuyers thanks to a year-old program created as part of a settlement between the Justice Department and banks. So far, about 180 L.A. County applicants have each been awarded $30,000 grants for down payments. Superior Grocers, one of Southern California's largest independent supermarket chains, celebrated the re-grand opening of its newly renovated store in Council District 9. In conjunction, there was also a special celebration to recognize the first community mural project completed in collaboration with Council District 9, the accelerated school and mural artist Andre Meripolsky. The fruits and veggies mural was developed by the team to help promote health and wellness efforts and to beautify the surrounding community. The mural was completed with the help of our students from Wallace-Annenberg High School. The Superior Grocers store is located at 7316 South Compton Avenue. It's a farmer's market that caters to the professional crowd downtown, and after a temporary relocation, it's being returned to its former high-profile location. Many City Hall workers and others who work in the surrounding area frequent the City Hall Farmers Market held every Thursday at lunchtime.
It's very convenient for the ones at lunchtime. It's only about a two-and-a-half-hour market during lunch, and it gets very, very busy.
The Farmers Market, originally located on the City Hall main lawn on First Street, was relocated to a less visible part outside of City Hall after the main lawn was taken over by Occupy L.A. protesters who set up encampments on the lawn. The city council recently approved extending the City Hall Farmers Market at least to the end of June.
Now that that lawn has been fully restored, beautifully restored, after the conclusion of the protests, the vote today will enable the Farmers Market to return to the City Hall lawn where it belongs.
But the vote comes with one caveat. Organizers will have to reimburse the city for cleaning services provided after each Farmers Market. That's a small price to pay for doing business. In fact, some say it's too small a price.
This is a business, Mr. President, and those vendors are making good money. I don't see why we can't charge a little extra because in the end, it's usually the city that ends up on the short end of that stick. So I hope that we get a little more than just reimbursement for cleanup costs.
Despite the concern, the council took no time approving the extension of the popular Farmers Market.
It's really important that the city do everything that we can to encourage Farmers Markets throughout our city. These are wonderful sources of fresh produce for the residents of Los Angeles.
And those who work downtown say they're grateful for this unique lunchtime treat.
I work nearby, and for working people, having a market to go to during the week is special. Otherwise, you don't have access to something like this during the work week and can only shop on the weekends.
Again, the City Hall Farmers Market is held at lunchtime on Thursdays. A new restaurant in Lake Balboa in the San Fernando Valley is also offering up some healthy fare while also being environmentally friendly. As Gil Reyes reports, the Humblebee Bakery is cooking up ways to be green and to reinvest in the local economy.
Less than a year after its grand opening, Humblebee Bakery and Cafe has received mostly rave reviews on social networking sites like Yelp. Customers say
It's amazing and fresh and organic and so inventive.
I like that we're supporting our community.
We just love coming here every weekend.
Whether you ordered the Eggs Benedict or the Garden Omelet, co-owner Jim Bonano says all his produce is bought farm-fresh locally, in places like the Encino Farmers Market. This helps to ensure most of his money is reinvested in our region. He also takes pride in being environmentally conscious.
All of our plastic packaging is corn-based, so that's all biodegradable. All of our paper packaging is also compostable, biodegradable. So pretty much everything we're using here, we're about 90%, organic right now.
To further help the environment and reduce energy costs, this family-owned business uses compact fluorescent lights throughout the restaurant. Also
All of our dishes are hand-washed in tub sinks, so we're not constantly washing, running a dish while we're loading.
All that has earned them an award certificate from the city of Los Angeles.
To have, have new restaurants open, particularly in this environment, in this economic climate, we encourage people to come by and we want to make sure they stay in business, not just because they're a great local restaurant, but they have great pastries and fresh breads.
The Humblebee Bakery and Cafe is located at 17321 Satacoy Street. It's open Wednesday through Sunday for breakfast and lunch. In Lake Balboa, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The restaurant also benefits from the business tax holiday, which waives the gross receipts tax for new businesses during their first three years. In this week's list of things to do, a stroll in the mountains, stepping at the Music Center, and activities for the whole family on the last weekend of the month. Take a free bus trip to the mountains on Saturday, February 23rd, for a visit to Solstice Canyon in Malibu. Walk next to a babbling brook, wander under towering alders and sycamore trees, and explore the park's many trails. A haven from city life, Solstice Canyon is the perfect spot to enjoy the beauty and serenity of nature. Meet at the Vista Hermosa Natural Park Office located at 100 North Toluca Street downtown. The event is sponsored by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and presented by the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. Call 213-250-1100 for more information. It's a little like tap dancing, but then, it's also nothing like it. If you've never experienced stepping, it's best described as a percussive dance that uses kicks, stomps, claps, and chants to create visually and musically exciting rhythms. And you have a chance to enjoy stepping on the Music Center stage on Saturday, February 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., when the world's first professional dance company devoted to stepping, Step Africa, puts on a show that draws from roots in African dance and military marching. The Music Center is located at 135 North Grand Avenue downtown. For more info, go to musiccenter.org. And if ever you're wondering what to do with the kids on a Saturday or Sunday, just remember, if it's the last weekend of the month, you can always bring the family to Skirball Cultural Center's Last Weekends of the Month events. For the month of February, the last weekend of the month falls on Saturday and Sunday, the 23rd and 24th. In celebration of President's Day, February's last weekend will feature a presidential art project at Skirball's Family Art Studio and a chance to visit with our first president, George Washington, who will regale families with tales from his days as cherry tree chopper-in-chief. The events are included with museum admission. The Skirball Cultural Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Go to skirball.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Love was definitely in the air at L.A. Animal Shelters this past Valentine's Day. A special adoption event in honor of love brought animal lovers and cuddly creatures together. Here's Anna Marcos with more on My Furry Valentine.
You're watching someone falling in love, make that two people falling in love with a furry friend. That was the idea as animal shelters all over L.A. launched My Furry Valentine, a pet adoption drive aimed at encouraging some canine-human love connections for Valentine's Day. This lady caught the love bug.
Do you think they're going to be Twiggy or Molly? I'm not sure yet. She's a sweetheart.
And there were sweethearts everywhere, looking for someone to love. The My Furry Valentine Drive offered big discounts to new pet owners and lovers, whether the sweetheart they took home was canine, feline, or something else.
Here at the shelter, they neuter him, they put a microchip on it. I just had to pay for a few vaccinations. I didn't have to do anything but just to give him love and give him food. That's it, and take him for walks.
Love definitely in the air at this pet matchmaking extravaganza, but shelter workers remind L.A. residents that every day is a day to adopt one of these little guys and make a love connection. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
For more information on pet adoptions, visit laanimalservices.com. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
It's Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to Los Angeles City Hall and to today's Los Angeles City Council meeting. Our council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome, so we say welcome to you all. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alarcon Buscaino, England, Garcetti Wezar, Corretz, Corin, Laban, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenthal, Zion, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zion moves. Laban seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zion moves. Laban seconds. Next.
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file Item 1B inasmuch as a settlement agreement has been reached, and to continue Item 18 to April 12, 2013.
Without objection. The next section on the agenda?
Very good, sir. Items one through three are items known as for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on 1B and 2.
Okay, let's hold those. Members, any specials? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next section.
Mr. President, items four through nine are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members, specials. Okay, seeing none, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let us open the roll, Madam Clerk. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, was the city attorney here on time today?
Yes, sir, I believe he was.
Okay, you've got a two-day, a one-day streak going, Deion. I'm proud of you. Can we go to the next section?
Items 10 through 19 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Wezar.
Sixteen for Mr. Corretz.
Sixteen for Mr. Corretz. Mr. Buscaino?
Item fourteen, please.
Fourteen for Mr. Buscaino. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 11, 14, 15, and 16.
Okay, we will hold those. Mr. Garcetti.
And if we can take up 12, 13, 15 together, if I can call those special?
Fine. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items.
We have to call 12 and 13 special. Okay, got them?
Okay, we had Mr. Garcetti's request. Okay, then let's vote on what's left. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, what I want to do right now is recognize Mr. Laban as soon as he... For a quick intro.
Mr. President, members, I'm joined by Michael Flood, who's the CEO of the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank. Today is Los Angeles Regional Food Bank Day in the city of Los Angeles. Forty years! Let's give him a hand right now. We had a great reception, Mr. Reyes in the rotunda, and everyone was then able to feel good about what this food bank has done. Tony Collier, who went to heaven, lived in Pasadena, worked in a restaurant, said, "I want to do something." Forty years ago, Russ, he got together and he put people in a situation to take food together, and now it's grown over 31,000 volunteers. With great help from the Walt Disney Company, as well as Ralph's Food and many others, they've made a big difference. So I wanted to make sure we get this recognition. Mr. President, I thank you. And Michael, you want to say a quick word real quick?
Well, just thank you, Council President Wesson and council members. You've all been supportive of the fight against hunger, each and every one of you around this table. We appreciate it, and with the high unemployment rate, we're going to keep pushing forward and feed as many people as we can. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, and we appreciate you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, why don't we vote to reconsider Item 3? So this vote is on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Garcetti, do you want to take your items up next, or do you need a little more time? In fact, give me an...
I think we're still waiting for a couple of people to show up on that.
Okay, so we'll go to Item 1.
Well, yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. On this item, you're requesting a record for liens for unpaid taxes. So again, while we have discussions regarding the election that's coming up, a budget deficit plays a huge role in that discussions. So you want to be more prudent in how you're using city resources and funds. So I'm wondering if you're recording the liens for unpaid taxes in these amounts, are you also recording the properties that are in foreclosure that are causing blight in the neighborhood? Because I believe you spent A and B, the time to put together an amendment to the city licenses regarding a $1,000 fee that banks are supposed to pay every day that a house that's in foreclosure is blighted. Do you have a record of those?
These are liens on unpaid business taxes.
Okay, stay on the subject if you would. Thank you. Okay, now, okay, now let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, we're going to go to Item 3, which was held special by Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at hollywoodhighlands.org. And also for identification purposes only, Eric Garcetti, anybody but committee mayor.
Stay on the subject.
Vacation. Now, I came up to you recently, a couple of days, a few days ago, about vacation. Vacation often means the city is giving land to somebody, that is, the city's land. Now, Mr. Laban said that's not true. So, Mr. Laban, I would like to invite you. It used to be in your district, the 6,200 block of Hollywood Boulevard, I mean, of Yucca Street, which I've lived on since 1976, and until four years ago, it was all city property. Then the owner of the building across from me got a deal, and you can come up there and see the parking circle, which is now fenced off, and is private property of this gentleman who owns it. So you can call me a liar, and we have Prince Kocorian over here. He always gets up and corrects me. They're wrong. This isn't a debating society. If it was, I would win. And I'd like to thank the public for their overwhelming response to our anti-prop. It is trailing two to one in the polls.
Stay on the subject.
Listen, from Hollywood in Yucca, would like to go to the ropes. We could have a conversation. Mr... Your name again, Mr. Walsh?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Laban. So let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we're going to go to Item 2 now. Mr. Clerk, we've got 12 members. I believe we have two cards on this, Arnold Sacks and John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, we're on Item 2. Mr. Sacks, we're on pass from Mr. Walsh.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. For some particular reason, well, the city attorney seems to think we have loads of money to run through all these liens and making all this progress. But this is actually a different kind of assessment because it failed. So the assessment cannot be enacted. But what's great here, it says, "Instructed Director Bureau of Street Lighting to assure that the streetlights are not installed or removed from service if previously installed," which begs to ask that question, how many streetlights service... How many members of the Department of Street Lighting does it take to unscrew a light bulb?
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's now open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Let's now move to Item 11. Called special by Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks, since you speak so much, you should try to sit closer to the microphone.
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to sit closer to the microphone sometimes, but with the amount of people you have here for the presentations...
No, Mr. Sacks, you know what I'm talking about. You're sitting in back all the time.
I sit where I sit, and you have presentations all the time.
So as soon as I call, since he sits where he sits, Mr. Clerk, when I call his name, and if he's not at the microphone, you start his time. Now, go on.
Okay, Mr. President, call my name, start my time, BFD. But cut down on your presentations, and I'll be able to move up.
Speak on the subject.
The subject is about my time, Mr. President. You made it about my time.
Okay, obviously, you don't want to talk on this subject. Mr. City Attorney, he's disrupting this meeting. This is the last warning.
My time is being used for your discussion, Mr. President. I think I should get it passed.
Okay, your time has expired. Mr. Dude, Mr. Dude, Mr. Dude. Sergeants, would you help him find a seat? Would you please help him find a seat close to the microphone? Help him find a seat.
If he continues to talk, he could be...
You are disrupting the meeting. You may want to go outside for a little while, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Dude, no, you're interfering with the next speaker. Yes, Mr. Dude.
In all the confusion, I'm going to have to reread this because I got confused. Committee relative to the calendar year, to the annual progress report for the implementation of the housing element. Wow. Can the city attorney explain to me what the housing element is? The housing element? I would say that it's very elementary. Everybody needs housing, right? It's elementary, my dear city attorney. Everybody needs a place to live. I got it. Do you get it? No, you don't get it. The real estate people and the city do not get it. Everybody needs a place to live. Quit inflating everything to the point where everybody is homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, Mr. Garcetti, you prepared to take up your items?
They all have speaker cards, so just...
Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Kocorian. Are you... You can go?
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'd like to ask Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Laban to join me. Yeah, come on in here. So, members, I'm very pleased to introduce you to an organization called New Filmmakers Los Angeles, nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that makes its home in Hollywood. So I want to make sure that council members Garcetti and Laban are here to welcome them as well. New Filmmakers is dedicated to showcasing the work of emerging talent from Los Angeles and around the world in the film industry. Each month, red carpet screenings featuring new and innovative works from new filmmakers in Los Angeles and elsewhere are presented, allowing the new talent to meet each other, mingle with industry professionals, and develop the relationships that they need to succeed in their careers. And we all know, and many of you have worked very, very hard, to ensure that Los Angeles continues to be a place that's hospitable to our most important heritage industry, the entertainment industry, the industry that has been the foundation for our economic growth and health for the last century. And you all know how difficult it has been at times to make sure that we continue to maintain the vitality of that industry. But the key, in my view, the key, more important than anything else, to keeping that industry here in Los Angeles is to continue to develop the new up-and-coming talent, the best creative talent, the best crews anywhere on planet Earth are right here in Los Angeles. We want to make sure that that continues to be the case, and that's what New Filmmakers helps enable us to do. So I want to applaud New Filmmakers Los Angeles. So, I want to applaud New Filmmakers Los Angeles for their efforts in promoting the work of these budding filmmakers that you see behind me since 2007. New Filmmakers has been a key in fostering this up-and-coming film talent and providing a forum to exhibit their work and also to meet each other. Over 15,000 Angelinos have already attended screenings by NFMLA since its inception. And it's important to note that a third of the films that have been programmed through this program have gone on to be picked up for distribution. So, it actually works. Some of the films that NFMLA has screened have even gone on to receive Oscar nominations. So, this is really a key group in developing the future talent of this great industry. And a short time ago, Mr. Labange and I were able to attend one of the programs that New Filmmakers had called On Location, the Los Angeles Video Project, in which these new upcoming filmmakers presented short videos about Los Angeles, slices of life in Los Angeles, Los Angeles from unique perspectives, the beauty of Los Angeles, and sometimes even the warts of Los Angeles. And it was a great, great opportunity for us to be able to see this explosion of creativity telling the story of Los Angeles. And that was something that was actually sponsored by DiscoverLosAngeles.com. And I think it was important that you all be able to see some of the work product that these young filmmakers have put on. So, we have a brief video clip, which I'd like to go to now, which shows some of the works. Yeah. Roll them, Kenny. Such a thrill for me to be able to sit and watch all of these different perspectives about Los Angeles, so skillfully told. Have a great time there, so enjoy yourself. So, as the credits are rolling, I just want to have everybody who participated in On Location, the Los Angeles Video Project, to please stand up and be recognized. And while they're doing that, I want to welcome the great council member from the 13th Council District who's done so much, not only to revitalize Hollywood, but also to fight for this film and television industry that means so much to Los Angeles, Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kokorian. And we've had no stronger champion for filming in this state as well as in this city than Paul Kokorian. So, thank you so much for taking the lead, not just in policy, but also in people. And New Filmmakers Los Angeles is about the people. This is a town full of 4 million stories. Hollywood is both a place and an idea. And bringing those two together on the screen has been something that New Filmmakers Los Angeles has been doing. I want to thank Sunset Gower Studios, which houses them. I know we have two representatives, both from the studio that are here today, and I want to thank them for their generosity. And I also want to thank all these filmmakers for telling those stories. We have the next Spielberg here. We've got the next talent right behind us. In fact, they're not the talents of tomorrow, they're the talents of today. And when we tell the stories of Los Angeles, we bring filming back because this is the best place in the world to film. This is the best place the talent comes to. As I'm speaking, somebody's getting off a plane or off a bus to make their dreams come true here in L.A. So, thank you, Paul. Thank you to the New Filmmakers, and keep it up. And should I toss it over to the one and only--
Sure.
--Tom Labange to say a few things to Councilmember Kokorian?
Mr. Garcetti, thank you. Sunset Gower, the revitalization of another studio, the Red Studio, Paramount Studio, all the studios in Hollywood revitalized for opportunity. Charles Bronson had a different name. He came down Melrose Avenue, and he sat on the corner there. I want to say, and forgive me, his name was Charles, it was a Polish name. Charles would come down and smack me. But he sat there on the corner of Melrose, and he looked up, and he said Bronson Avenue. I'm Charles Bronson now. That was his dream. True story. True story. Jack Nicholson sat back right there in Chinatown in this room. True story. Bill Clinton went to Boy's State in Washington, D.C., and shook hands with President Kennedy. True story. Young people need opportunity, and you give them opportunity. You give them opportunity and make this happen, and this connection. I was young once, and the elevators were busted at the Coliseum. And what did me and my brothers do? We carried down the equipment for NFL Films as cameramen. They needed help. 24 years, I worked for the National Football League on Sundays as an assistant cameraman. And they had two rules. First rule was show up on Vince Lombardi time, which is 15 minutes before the meeting was scheduled.
Charles Pachinski.
Charles Pachinski, very good there. They wrote scarlet, Mr. Garcetti. Show up 15 minutes before call time. So, that was one of the rules. And the other is finish like a pro. These are a pro, and I want to thank the Los Angeles Tourist Board for what they did in those images there, from the Observatory to LAX, from Sunset Boulevard to Alvera Street. Very special. So, this is the future, and Mr. Kokorian, you have done so much at the state level and the local level. Paul, give Paul a hand for bringing--
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. So, thank you. New Filmmakers Los Angeles, the real driving force between making this the extraordinary success that it has been over these last five years, has been its executive director, who I'm pleased to introduce, Executive Director Larry LeBeau.
Thank you very much. I want to give a big thank you to Paul, to Tom, and to Eric. They've all been really leading the way in the past few years and helping to support our organization. I know that these guys are kind of like the film advocates of L.A. City Council, and I know they've made it a cause that's really close to them. And I think it's one that's really very important. We might look at it, and we might say, oh, well, it's film. It's not homelessness. It's not poverty. It's not public housing. But you know what? We're able to highlight all of these issues through independent film. And not only can we highlight it, but we can bring an economic impact to Southern California, which I think all of you know very well from the L.A. EDC statistics of what filmmaking does as an impact to the local economy. So, what we do as a nonprofit film organization is not only promote Los Angeles, but we promote storytelling. So, we want to share these filmmaker stories around the community. We want our events to be open to the community. We want it to be a learning experience. We want to let these filmmakers share their stories. And we want to let the community members learn from what these filmmakers have to say about sharing their stories, and also let these filmmakers learn about the process of filmmaking, the business of filmmaking, the art of filmmaking. It is an industry as much as it is an art. So, I hope it's something that the council will keep on their agendas and keep supporting, and participate, and send representatives from the council to attend our events, to talk about what we're doing, to encourage media to highlight the filmmakers that we're showcasing. That's what's most important to them, is for them to have that acknowledgement and for them to know that people are advocating for what they're doing and supporting what they're doing. So, yeah, the organization is thriving. We're doing really well, and we thank the council for letting us have this opportunity to tell you more about it, and hopefully everyone can lend their support in some way. So, thank you. Also, we have one specific program of our nonprofit called On Location, the Los Angeles Video Project. And what that does is it's a competition that enlists local L.A.-based filmmakers to go out and make a film that highlights the city of Los Angeles. So, you can kind of think of it as almost a branded entertainment, right? You take Coca-Cola, and you put it in a storyline. Well, this storyline is Los Angeles. And what we want to do is we want to take the city, and we want to put it in these storylines. We want to see commercials. We want to see music videos. We want to see narrative comedies, narrative dramas. We want to let these filmmakers go out and showcase the city while telling the story of what is their L.A. And we were able to get the initial program off the ground in 2011, thanks to the L.A. Tourism and Convention Board and L.A. Weekly. So, I want to commend Bill Cars, who is the Online Marketing Director for L.A. Tourism Convention Board. If it were not for Bill, that program would not have happened. Bill took a big risk in trusting in our organization and believing in what we were trying to do, and it's turned out amazing. So, I want to introduce Bill Cars and have him just say a couple of words about why he decided to use some of the marketing funding from L.A. Tourism Convention Board for a nonprofit film organization like ours. So, here's Bill.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you to everyone here today. I just really want to commend New Filmmakers Los Angeles for kind of giving us the opportunity to showcase the best of Los Angeles to the rest of the world. And that's our mission, and it's great to have talent in Los Angeles that allows us to showcase L.A. And I really think everybody here today has done a fabulous job so far, and I look forward to next year. So, thank you.
Good job. Good speech.
So, it's a great coming together of our heritage entertainment industry and the critical importance of our tourism industry, all coming together in New Filmmakers Los Angeles. And, you know, New Filmmakers has received tremendous support from the established entertainment industry. And so, I'd like to introduce Damian Lichtenstein, who's a member of the Board of Directors of Filmmakers, New Filmmakers, to come up and say a word as well about his involvement
Thank you very much. My name's Damian Lichtenstein. I'm the CEO of Equilibrium Entertainment. We are a Hollywood-based film and television, and now video game development company, as well as I'm a member of the Board of New Filmmakers. And I'm also Senior Leadership Counsel at the Directors Guild of America. I guess what I want to say is the profound importance of Los Angeles remaining the filmmaking capital of the world. And that's why New Filmmakers is such an extraordinary and important organization. I've traveled the world. I've been in these chambers before. I've sat with your mayor. He even told me on one of his recent trips to China that, you know, he said, I'm the mayor of Los Angeles, and, you know, he got some nods. He said, that also means I'm the mayor of Hollywood, and he got a rounding, standing ovation. What I think it's important to note is that Hollywood is still the biggest brand on the planet today. And it's critically important that we do everything that we can to maintain the power that Los Angeles and that the Hollywood community has on a global level, because we're still the place that people look to for dreams. We are a dream factory. You all work really hard every day to keep the city running, and it's really critical that organizations like New Filmmakers and that myself, as a film director, spend the time, the energy, and also put our money where our mouth is, which we do, which is that every year, we award a production grant to the winning filmmaker that best represents Los Angeles, that gives them the opportunity, the money, the support, and the structure to be able to go out and fulfill upon their dreams. And as we continue to provide the place where dreams are made in the world, then Los Angeles and Hollywood and the New Filmmakers will continue to inspire the planet and all of us. And I thank you for your time. I really, hats off to everyone at New Filmmakers and for all the support.
Thank you. Thank you, Damian, very much. And just to conclude, Mr. President, there've been three organizations that have meant a great deal to New Filmmakers Los Angeles that we just want to recognize with certificates now, and they are Hudson Pacific Properties, which oversees Sunset Gower Studios, who are represented today by Howard Stern. The Moll Richardson Company, which is a lighting, power distribution, and grip company that supported New Filmmaker L.A. events and continues to do business here in Los Angeles--
Over 90 years.
--for over 90 years, supporting the film and television industry, even as we've had, you know, loss of business that comes from loss of production, but they're still committed to Los Angeles and doing a great job. And of course, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, which is represented today by its president, Laron Goobler. So, I want to give them a hand, and we have certificates to recognize each of them as well. Thank you, colleagues, very much. Appreciate your time.
Congratulations. Let's give a big round of applause. Congressman Zahn, are you on the queue? Congressman Zahn, Councilor Rosendahl? Wait till-- Oh, wait, we have Congressman Zahn?
Wait till you do the photo.
We can hear you.
What a handsome crew. What a handsome-- I just wanted to, Mr. Kokorian, Mr. Kokorian, Mr. Kokorian, there's still a couple that have some positive comments to make regarding this, me and my colleague, Mr. Bill Rosendahl. When you were in the State Assembly, you were very, very concerned about the industry. And obviously, transferring into the City Council, you've continued that passion to try and help the industry, the entertainment capital of the world. And as we see some of those films go in other locations, folks like you will hopefully keep the business here, keep the economy here, keep it thriving. I know Hollywood's made a major transformation. I've been to some of the studios, and what we try to do is open the doors and the red carpet, and that's what Mr. Kokorian has done continuously. So, I just want to acknowledge you for that. And to see these folks here, that is the future of our industry. And you think of how many folks in the city of Los Angeles work in the industry. It's phenomenal, the dollars that they spend. And when you have your wrap parties at the end, the caterers love it. The flower places love it. It's a party time. So, to all of you, congratulations. Keep working. This council is very supportive of what you're doing, very supportive of making it easier, making it better, and we're going hand-in-hand with you. But Mr. Labange, Mr. Hollywood, Mr. Garcetti, what you've done to make Hollywood the entertainment capital, and we want to maintain that title, entertainment capital of the world. So, thank you all for being here. Thank you for the hard, good work you do, and you are the future of our movie industry. So, and I know Sunday's going to be a big day. We'll be watching to see those shows that win as we close down Hollywood Boulevard at Highland. But someday, you'll be going down the red carpet at that wonderful event. So, thank you all. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congressman Rosendahl? Storytelling is what it's all about. If you can tell a story, and you can have people listen to that story, identify with that story, you've been successful. I've been a storyteller all my life, too. Had a chance to do a lot of public affairs programming, but it's basically listening and telling a story. And to see the future, I mean, come on, young people here, excited, enthused, engaged, involved. Hollywood is here to stay, and its multiplier effect across the world is phenomenal. One of my joys was when I ran this big cable conglomerate. It was the one through the hills and the mountains, where all the entertainers live, where all the producers live, where all the stars live, the writers, the directors. The multiplier effect of what comes out of Hollywood impacts everybody on the planet. So, you have a dramatic ability to impact the whole world in a positive way. So, God bless you all. Keep doing the stories, and onward and upward for Hollywood. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for that great presentation, councilmembers. And Congressman Garcetti, are we ready? Okay.
Thank you. I think we have some cards on this. If you want to take those at the outset on items 12, 13, and 15, be happy to take those. We have some guests here from Chirla, the Thai CDC, Human Relations Commission, COFEM, who are here today, and then I'll be happy to follow--
Okay, so, since we are taking three items together, we will offer each speaker three minutes each for all three items. So, that being said, we do have the following speakers. If I call you up--
If I call you up, please come to the microphone. And if you could please sit close to the microphone or stand behind the speaker, you're welcome to do that. So you have with us John Walsh. And this is for three items. John Walsh, are you here? We also have with us Kalsa with the City Human Relations Commission.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, for identification purposes only, the Dennis Zine progressives, progressives for Dennis Zine for election. I'd like to point out, the last thing we need to do is grow government. This concerns reestablishing an Office of Immigrant Affairs. You are doing a great job, and I'm not being sarcastic here on immigrant affairs, but you're not doing a great job on growing the bureaucracy. Now, that's what this is, the question is, do we need to hire more people? And when you create these new bureaucracies, you can keep them out of civil service. And when they're kept out of civil service, then the mayor and you folks up here get to pick who is going to be part of the brave new world of Office of Immigrant Affairs. What are they going to be doing having affairs with immigrants? I wouldn't be surprised. We want, now, why do we want the government? You are saying to us on March 5th that you are broke. In order to keep the government going at this level, you need $215 million a year in Prop A for the rest of the life of the world. I am saying that money is not... Let me tell you what's going to happen if you vote against it. If you vote against Prop A, guess what? They won't reestablish, they won't have the money to reestablish whatever that Office of Immigrant Affairs, how long has we had it? How many immigrants up here, you know, a lot of the immigrants, I don't see thousands and thousands of immigrants up here saying, "I want to have affairs with the mayor." In fact, there are a couple of immigrants who've had affairs with the mayor, but that's a different story. That's why I'm asking you now, if you want to pass Prop A, and you know it's losing now two to one in the ABC poll, then show us, make, say, "Okay, Mr. Walsh, okay, all you anti-tax white guys, we are going to stay this until we know what the establish, what kind of budget we can have next year." No, no, you'll add it here. You can see Garcetti's picking his nose. He's not interested. HollywoodHighlands.org, go for our endorsements and also for the mayor's poll, HollywoodHighland.org.
Thank you. Juan Del Haza.
Yeah, I was congratulating the rich little idiots with cameras. That's all they are, you know, producing things.
Sir, stick to the item.
Oh, yeah, the item, the item, sorry. We need immigration reform because nobody in the world should be called an illegal, an illegal human being any place on earth. We all came to earth, we don't even know how. We're all here, we are all the human race, and we are calling each other illegal aliens. We are dividing each other. We are producing atomic weapons to wipe each other out. What a bunch of little idiots we are. Don't you agree? We should not even have any borders, idiots, whoever's making the borders, not you. You guys are bright.
Thank you very much. We have, I believe it's Kalsa with the City Human Relations Commission. Good day, sir. Welcome.
Good morning, council members. Pleasure to see you all this morning. The City Human Relations Commission really, really endorses and encourages the City Council to go forward with the creation of an office or personnel that specifically pays attention to the immigration issues in Los Angeles. Los Angeles is a really special place. Immigration is a huge issue for us. And the fact that we've had a mayor's office on immigration affairs for the last several years, and it's actually been unfortunately sitting relatively dormant in the HRC because we haven't had the personnel to staff it, I think it's a really important time for us to reemerge and pay a lot of attention to this issue. It's going to be a national issue, and whatever they do nationally is going to affect us here. I would also suggest that during the process of this, whatever we do, however you form this Office of Immigration Affairs, that they work in partnership with the Human Relations Commission. We have deep and long-lasting relationships with Chirla, Maldef, many, many, many of the NGOs and faith communities that deal with immigration issues now. So thank you for my three minutes. We also, I'll put in a little plug, if you want to fund a couple extra positions in the HRC, we can do it very economically. Thank you, council members.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service to the city. Truly appreciate your hard work. Our next speaker is Susana Reguín. Susana, if you'd like to come on up. Buenos días.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Susana Reguín. Estoy representando... Susana Reguín, estoy representando la organización de COFEM.
Good morning. My name is Susana Reguín, and I'm here representing COFEM organization. Along with the rest of my friends from the same organization. I'm also here representing Pico Union Community, which is my community. La razón por estar acá es porque estamos en apoyo a nuestros hermanos emigrantes. We're here because we want to support our immigrant brothers and sisters. Porque todos somos emigrantes en este país. Because we are all immigrants in this country. Y ellos son una representación nuestra acá para levantar la economía. They also represent us here in this country. They give a lot to the economy. Y recuerden siempre que cuando tienen un platito en la casa con su ensalada y su fruta es de emigrantes que han recogido esa cosecha. And always remember that when you have, when you're enjoying a plate with fruit and salad at your home for dinner, remember that that fruit and that salad was picked on the fields by our immigrant brothers and sisters. Y les agradezco mucho que tomen en cuenta esta reforma migratoria para el bien de nuestros hermanos emigrantes. And we truly appreciate your consideration of supporting this immigration reform in support of our immigrant brothers and sisters. Muchas gracias, y le paso a la siguiente persona de mi grupo. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. The next speaker is Antonio Bernabé. Antonio?
Antonio.
Personas que han podido llenar las cartas, estamos nombrando.
Hi, yeah, my name is Antonio. I'm an organizer with Chirla. Chirla is a coalition for humanitarian rights of Los Angeles. I'm here with some of the Chirla members. Like President Obama said, we are all immigrants in this country. So that's why LA is a city of immigrants, and we had to open this immigrants affairs office because it's really needed. We need to take care of immigrants with documents, with no documents, citizens, because we are all immigrants. And also, we had to support immigration reform. That's why the city of Los Angeles has to have a resolution supporting immigration reform that can happen this year. And if that happens, this office is going to guide all the immigrant families into the process to get the residency and the citizenship. Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. I believe it's Inocencia Hernández. Buenos días.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Inocencia Hernández. Yo estoy aquí para apoyar a nuestros hermanos que sufren la discriminación de deportación.
Good morning. My name is Inocencia Hernández. I'm here in support of my brothers and sisters who are immigrants, and they're going through the hardship of deportation procedures, proceedings.
Estas familias están aquí por un largo tiempo. Sus hijos han nacido aquí y tienen que sufrir la separación de sus padres.
These families have lived in this country for a long time. Their children have been born here, and due to the discrimination they face, they have to face separating or the division of their families by the authorities.
Las autoridades no les interesa con quién quedan los niños aquí en este país cuando sus padres se van.
It really seems like the authorities do not really care where the children stay or with whom they stay in this country when their parents are deported.
Estas familias, si les toca que llevan a sus hijos a México, se encuentran las criaturas que no saben el idioma, no saben las costumbres, y se confunden toditos. Ellos son ciudadanos americanos.
There's been instances when the family has been deported and they have taken their citizen children to Mexico. And when that happens, the children get very confused because they do not know the culture, the customs of Mexico, and they're also lacking in the language. And that makes them go through a great hardship.
Y yo quisiera que ustedes aquí, los del Consilio, tomaran en cuenta todo este sufrimiento que sufren nuestras familias.
And I would like to ask all of you to please keep in mind and consider all the suffering hardships that these families go through.
Cuando yo escucho todas esas opiniones de toda la gente negativa, me dan ganas de llorar y decir, "Por qué quieren ustedes tener todo y no nos dan una oportunidad a nosotros?"
When I hear all the comments, the negative comments from a lot of people who do not understand these hardships, I really feel like crying. And I ask, "Why? Why is it that you want it all for you and do not want to give the rest of us an opportunity?"
Cuando todos somos emigrantes en este país, todos venimos de algún lado, si no ahorita, pero nuestros antepasados estuvieron aquí.
Because let's keep in mind that we're all immigrants. We either are first-generation immigrants or previous families, or their families in the past came here also as immigrants, but we all are at the end immigrants in this country.
Y yo sé que todos juntos vamos a hacer esta nación grande. Todos los hispanos ahorita se están registrando y estamos apoyando bastante a todo lo que viene de leyes del gobierno.
And I know that all together, we're going to make this country a much bigger and better place. All of the immigrants are now registering to vote, and we're going to be supporting all the new laws that are coming down from the government to the communities.
Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for your attention.
Muchas gracias a usted. José Felix.
¿Qué tal? Muy buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es José Félix.
Good morning. My name is José Félix.
Soy este promotor cívico de COFEM, Consejo de Federaciones Mexicanas.
I'm a civic promoter of COFEM.
Y también este líder comunitario de MacArthur Park.
I'm also a community leader at MacArthur Park.
Yo creo que esa es una lucha que hemos llevado por mucho tiempo.
I think this is a fight that has been going on for too long.
Y estamos viendo, yo creo, un poco de la luz de la esperanza.
And I think we're finally seeing a light of hope.
Entonces gracias a todos ustedes, el apoyo de ustedes, todos los concejales.
Thank you for all support. Thank you for all you council members and your support.
Sería un trabajo más fuerte para lograr esta reforma migratoria.
With your support, I know we will be stronger in order to support and have this immigration reform be approved.
Que tanto ayudaría a nuestra comunidad.
Because it would help our community a great deal.
Y a nuestro país también para tener más trabajos para toda la gente.
And it's also going to be very beneficial to our country because it's going to provide a lot of work for a lot of people.
Y muchas gracias a todos por tomar esta consideración.
Thank you, everyone, for considering this request.
Yes, ma'am. Raul Mourinho.
Thank you so much for the opportunity in talking about this issue. First of all, I want to congratulate the City Council for taking responsibility and supporting comprehensive immigration reform and realizing that at this moment, there's no place in politics in the United States for anti-immigrant and anti-family unity issues and ideas. We as community are committed to keep fighting and working towards immigration reform, and we need your leadership behind us and in front of us as well to accomplish this. The sooner the better, hopefully this year, to end the suffering of millions and millions of US citizen children that have been separated from their parents or they've been suffering thinking about being separated from their parents. So congratulations once again, and hopefully the next step is to making the city of Los Angeles more comprehensive for the people we live here in this city. We look forward to receive the city IDs they have in promise and voted right here in the City Council as soon as possible. All people need that in order to get benefits in the city. So we're ready to support that action as soon as possible. Thank you so much for your opportunity and congratulations. We're proud of you. Bye.
Thank you very much. Panida... Luzonka? I hope I pronounced that correctly.
My name is Panida Jantsa from the Thai Community Development Center. Thanks. A country, a city as diverse and rich with manpower and ingenuity will surely prosper with advent of comprehensive immigration reform. After decades of waiting, thousands of Thai immigrants who work in our neighborhood restaurants, homes of our more affluent citizens, and the fields where they harvest our fruits and vegetables will be able to come forward and out of the shadows to be treated as human beings whose only aspiration was to seek a better life for themselves and their families. Immigration reform is not a threat to the economy. If anything, it makes us stronger. Immigrants fill critical gaps in our workforce, invest in new businesses, and bring much-needed skill sets in science, technology, engineering, and math. I want to speak specifically about what Thai Community Development Center has done to help the economy in the city of Los Angeles. We developed a neighborhood in East Hollywood we now call Taitown. And right now, our project includes the Taitown Marketplace, a small business incubator which will produce 42 permanent jobs in East Hollywood on the corner of Hollywood and Western. We also provide small business counseling at our center, and this is for new and existing entrepreneurs, and we allow them access to capital by providing this type of assistance. We also build new and renovate affordable housing. Right now, we have projects in Hollywood and Sun Valley. We also partner with our local Hollywood Family Source Center to increase incomes among those that need it the most. One of their projects includes VITA, which includes assisting families in obtaining the Earn Income Tax Credit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Daniel Jones.
My name is Daniel Jones. If you had a community impact statement, you wouldn't need ad hoc committee. What don't we know about gangs? What we do know about gangs is they need capital for their existence.
Sir, if you focus on the agenda items, we would very much appreciate it.
All right. To address all matters relating to prevention, the word "all," I'm going to define the word "gang" in your...
Mr. President, I think he made me think that he's talking on Item 14.
Sir, on your card, you put number 15? I understand, sir. Please hear me out. On your card, you put number 15, but you keep speaking to Item 14.
You said all three, right?
If you have 13, you're going to focus on the item of immigrant affairs, please do so.
My bad. Forget everything I just said.
No problem.
It never happened, right? The act of consideration is the act of consideration, what makes it real, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry about that, my confusion.
No problem. So Item 13 is...
Oh, immigration reform.
Yes.
Why are we reestablishing it in the first place, is my question? We are land of immigrants. The question begs is why an immigrant would want to come here in the first place? Because from what I can tell my whole life, most people who are not running to the law as far as appreciating it, loving it, and obeying it, they run from it. The direction needs to be less of an immigrant issue and more of one of encompassment, I would imagine. And this is where the direction... would imagine, and this is where the direction that it seems to be going, and I'm here to nod the fact that it's going in that right direction, and I appreciate that. But we already know what gang violence is, I mean, immigration issues are. Let's just keep going.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Francisco Moreno.
Good morning, my name is Francisco Moreno. On behalf of the Council of Mexican Federations, we applaud the Council to take this resolution to vote, yes, on this resolution. As you know, we immigrants, we are the workforce of this city and in this country. We applaud this vote, and thank you all the councils to take this motion, and really, we appreciate this for the immigrant people in this country, in this city. Thank you very much, thank you.
Again, thank you for your hard work. That does conclude all the speaker cards. Consul Garcia, if you'd like to address the items.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all of our guests that were here. Muchas gracias por venir to CHIRLA, to SEIU, COFEM, Thai CDC, to our Human Relations Commission Vice President who is here, and the great work of the Human Relations Commission. Los Angeles is a city of immigrants. I think the statistic is close to 65% of the population are either immigrants or the children of immigrants. I'm a grandson of immigrants sitting next to an immigrant who came here from Mexico, Mr. Weezer. My grandparents came here from Mexico and Russia, finding the safety that they could not find in their home country. But when they came here, they found much more than safety, they found opportunity, and it's what's made this city strong, it's what's built our buildings, it's what's paved our streets, it's what's made our country so strong as well. And I'm proud to be with you here today to discuss legislation to reestablish a city of Los Angeles Office of Immigrant Affairs, and also to make Los Angeles the first big city in the nation to step forward with a dedicated initiative to guide our immigrant residents through President Obama's new pathway to legal status and citizenship. We have this hand in hand today with a call to stand on record for comprehensive immigration reform. We have much to gain from it: new taxes, we have people who are going to be able to get scholarships and go to college, we have individuals who will be able to work, whether it's picking our vegetables and fruit or making our clothes. The hardest, toughest jobs in this community where that work is being done, it's time to take people out of the shadows and into the light, to end our hypocrisy on immigration in recent years, and to re-embrace our pathway as an immigrant nation. L.A. is home to thousands of hard-working immigrants who do pay taxes, own small businesses, earning college degrees, and they're also looking for legal status. Dreamers that are here today, studying hard, knowing no other country but America, who are shut out of opportunities. I'm reminded of my grandfather, who was a dreamer himself, here for 30 years without legal status, until he volunteered in World War II for the only country he knew, fought in the Pacific Theater and came back here as a citizen, and was able to provide for his family, and that's the reason that I'm here today. That's why I believe that supporting the president's move and congressional attempts to have comprehensive immigration reform is just a first step. We here at the local level have to be ready to take action the moment that that passes, and even before it passes. In 2002, I worked with Mayor Hahn, and in 2004, we established the Office of Immigrant Affairs, and I know that we'll be able to pull from existing resources. I know in these budget times, we're not calling for funds to come in from something else and to cut, but through existing resources, to have this office, as the Human Relations Commission has kept going, to have authority over all of our departments, to look at how our departments are serving immigrants, how the city can be on the record for more immigration reform, and to make sure that we do what great cities in America have done for hundreds of years. In New York, when Italians and Irish and others arrived on the banks of New York, there used to be an office there that would help people learn the rules of the country, get involved in civic participation, become government workers, participate in elections. Today, we are that Ellis Island here in Los Angeles, greeting folks from over 144 countries, over 200 languages, 37 countries with the largest population outside the home country. I'm proud to have advised the White House on immigration reform, and these actions are about making sure we go beyond advice and offer real solutions, because we can change the laws at the national level, but if we aren't ready to implement them here locally, we're going to be left behind. But if we do, if we're at the front, we will show not only Los Angeles and our residents the services they deserve, but show this nation how we can be a nation of immigrants as well. In April, we're going to be organizing large rallies here at City Hall, working together with our partners from COFEM, from the immigrant rights community, from labor, from business, from everybody who knows this is the right thing to do, but this is laying down the foundation to do that now, and I want to thank councilmembers Reyes and Alarcon, Weezer, and everybody who's joined to be a part of this. When we help people with preventative care, the taxpayers, sorry, when we help people access preventative care, the taxpayers can avoid the far more expensive bills of an emergency room visit. When we allow people to safely report crimes in their community to LAPD, it makes the entire city safer. When we make sure that babies get the nutrition that they need, that students get the scholarships they deserve, we set them onto a path of recovering our economy and making sure that this is a great city of angels. So, otra vez muchas gracias por su presencia, por su visión. We have many days ahead of us, but I know that we will finally, this year, get the immigration reform we deserve, and with your help, we will get the report back of how we can reestablish this office here and be an example to this world and to this country once again.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Mr. Rosendorf, followed by Mr. Reyes and Mr. LaBons.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you for coming. This is democracy at its best, putting it all out there. My parents were immigrants. My mother was a farm woman in Southern Germany, and she knew the streets were paved with gold in America. That's how she came here. My father was against the rise of Hitler and had gone to the Paris Peace Conference in 1919, and he saw what Hitler was doing, and he said, "I'm getting out of here, too." My parents met in New York, at 86th Street, in the Catholic Church, in the choir. They fell in love and had eight children. I'm the third of the youngest, so I am first generation. We suffered a little bit of discrimination when they found out we were German. They raided our house, and they looked for shortwave radios, but obviously, my parents came here for the American dream. Look, except for the American Indian, the indigenous people, all of us have come from everywhere else. That's what makes America strong, because we are the place of hope, we are the place of life, we are the place of making things happen for ourselves. Look, I'm an Anglo, but a German immigrant son. All of our area here is Spanish names. Why? Because Spain and Mexico, it was part of Mexico before us white folks came with this Destiny thing and kicked the Latinos out. I mean, this is ridiculous. So we need to find solutions for immigration. Whoever our next mayor is, will take leadership on the local level, but it's the beauty of the blending of the planet. When Mr. Garcia said, "There are 37 nations that have over here the most substantial number of people," it's extraordinary who we are in Los Angeles and in New York. So I applaud you for coming. I look forward to national leadership that suggests that all of us should be brought into the... There are 11 million people out there that should be legalized and made citizens of the United States, period. No more problems is this direction we need to go as a nation. God bless you for coming, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendorf. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. LaBons.
Thank you, Consul President. I rise to support these very important items. Well, thank Consul Garcia for his leadership, my colleagues Consul Merzain and Consul Alarcon for signing on to these very significant improvements in how the city can function. When we look at it from a very basic level, we need to get the people out of the shadows. There are so many opportunities that this city could build upon if we allow people to feel like human beings, to be part of a city that is the second-largest in this country and has the largest populations of many of the major countries throughout this world. And for us to shortchange ourselves as a megalopolis because we choose to relegate people to a subclass does not make any sense, especially when you look at how our educational levels have fallen so low, where we're at the point where we are recruiting engineers and nurses from other countries. We have so many talented, smart folks who work so hard, and we give them a chance to be part of our society. This is very fundamental when it comes to building up our confidence with our police officers. We look at special authority, we could enhance our public safety, we could create confidence in our communication with our fire department personnel, with our police officers, with all the authorities that can help us go after those elements that reflect criminal acts, those safe houses for gangs that store drugs and stolen parts of cars. We are putting ourselves in danger because we do not have the confidence to engage our police officers because of this fear of deportation. So now we talk about being part of a social fabric, part of a country, what are we saying to our young people when we take away their parents, when we take away that which is home for them and leave them in a very foreign place because of laws that are so punitive? This body has done a great amount of work in the past, working in nationally legal cities. We've endorsed resolutions that speak to what's good for the human being. We've taken actions against laws that have hurt our communities in the Southwest, given debacle that we saw over in Arizona. We have stood up time and time again for what is just, for what is right, for all of our citizenry. So this falls along those lines, and how we can continue to make this a strong city. This is pro-business, this is pro-family, this is for our welfare in our own neighborhoods. So again, I thank my colleagues as a city, as a council. There's only so much we could do, but we're showing what we can do with these motions. We're not the state offices, we're not the federal offices, we're the municipal government that's doing its best with what's been relegated to us by the neglect, I feel, from some of our state officials and some of our federal officials who choose not to recognize this great country for what it can be. So again, thank you, colleagues, and rise to support these items. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. LaBons.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcia, thank you for your leadership in all of this and the diversity that you've championed as this, and Mr. Zain and Mr. Reyes for second, and all people, we all come from somewhere. In 1886, my grandfather came, great-grandfather came from Germany, and in like 1901, grandfather came from Ireland, and one lived across the street at 310 North Main. The other one got a job on the police department, and life progressed. And as Mr. Rosendorf talked about, a fabulous family of eight, we had eight. And what was the amazing thing, Mr. Rosendorf, when my one grandfather from Ireland made sergeant, he was a patrolman, made sergeant, they moved from Lincoln Heights, Ed, to the Wilshire District, and they were able to buy a house. Well, now, reestablishing this office is so important. Reestablishing a place for people to go is so important to get information, to be able to make the next steps, to be a better life for their family, for themselves. Reestablishing that, Mr. Garcia, is key, as you've seen and do, which is so important, because whether or not the federal government's going to be the federal government, the state will be the state, we should always have a way to help people, and because our libraries are open to all, our parks are open to all, and to incorporate and raise people into that system, it is good. And I say all this often, in, there's Richard Zaldivar, Richard Zaldivar, former deputy to the late Councilman Art Snyder. Richard, I haven't seen you since Art passed. God bless Art. When the Nobel Police Prize is given, Mr. Alarcon, it's given not in the Parliament Building of the state of, in Sweden, it's not given at the State House, it's given at the City Hall in Oslo, and the City Hall is often the starting place for someone to find their guidance to get there. So this is a good thing, and this is a good thing for all of us. And yes, we will respect the laws, we may not like the laws, we want to change the laws or see more enforcement of the laws, but whatever the law is, we should know, and if our door is open, you're going to come, and if you come in, you're going to get an answer, and you're going to smile on the way out and feel part of the great city of angels. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, as always, and again, Mr. Garcia, thank you.
Thank you, Consul Alarcon. Next, please. Consul.
Yeah, I too rise to salute the leadership of Eric Garcia. You know, the city of Los Angeles over the years has frankly patronized the issue of immigration. We deal with it when issues emerge in our communities or on the national spectrum, but we don't deal with it on a consistent or holistic basis. This is the foundation for doing just that, and that's what I think is so important about these actions. The fact of the matter is, Los Angeles is an immigrant city, and in fact, a huge chunk, probably 20 or 25% of the population are immigrants to this country, and yet, we do not embrace that as our future, when all the studies and all the research and all the facts show that immigrants are the driving force of our economy, one way or the other, up or down, historically. And so, to take this notion of the immigrant population as our future, to embrace it and design plans and strategies to expedite the process of their success, because every one of us is an example of immigrant success. Every person sitting around this horseshoe is an example of immigrant success. The question is, was it in the first generation, the second generation, or the third generation? And all statistics show that typically it's in the third to fifth generation when the success of the American middle class finally emerges. Well, we need to embrace that, we need to expedite that so that it occurs in the second and first generations more often. The fact of the matter is, the vast majority of small businesses in the state of California are owned by immigrants, and yet, 90% of them fail within the first year. We need to improve on that as part of our economic strategy, as part of the well-being of our society. We need to ensure that those businesses penetrate through that success, past the first year, and beyond, and create jobs in our community. And so, this is a measure whose time is long overdue, and yes, we want to thank all the immigrants' rights organizations because they have understood this for many, many years. It is necessary for the next mayor to ensure that the general population of Los Angeles embraces the same notion. We need somebody who can articulate that to them in a way that they can trust that it is not just patronizing the population, that in fact, it is important for all of us, for all of our well-being, for immigrants to do well. That is the spirit of these actions, and I commend again Mr. Garcia for his leadership. I only hope that we can rely on that leadership as the future continues.
Consul Member Corretts, followed by Consul Bustaino.
I think many of us are in the same situation. My father escaped the Nazis from Germany as well at the end of 1939, went to Argentina, and I actually have no idea and no real way to find out, as far as I can tell, whether he came here legally or not, but it really doesn't matter. We're a nation of immigrants, the success of immigrants really has a lot to do with our future, and we're a city of immigrants. If there ever was a city of immigrants, it's the city of Los Angeles that has the most, highest number of diverse populations. I think, as Mr. Alarcon said, the success of immigrants is critical to the success of all of us, and I thank Mr. Garcia and everyone else who was involved in this, and let's make this an even greater city and an even greater country by treating our immigrants appropriately.
Thank you. Consul Corretts, Consul Bustaino.
Thank you, colleagues. I stand before you as a son of Italian immigrants, supporting these items before you, and I think oftentimes, I think about my great aunt, Josephine Lefata, who called my family, my mom and dad, in Italy, and letting them know to come to America. There are opportunities here in the fishing industry, in the canary industry, and the shipyard industry, as well as the docks, and the harbor area comprises of a number of immigrant communities that I am blessed to represent, and I think of Saint Francis Cabrini, who's missionary, supported the Italian immigrants who came here long ago. I stand before you as a true testimony to let you know that we are a country of immigrants, and to know that this country is made up of opportunities for... and to know that this country is made up of opportunities for us all, regardless of where you come from. So with that, Mr. Garcetti, thank you for your leadership on this and moving forward and championing this effort. And I stand to support this as we move forward and continue to praise and recognize our President, President Obama, who continues to champion this effort in leading our country in the right path and offering a comprehensive immigration reform that's going to work for everyone in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our next speaker, Councilor Wiesa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, be brief. A lot has been said, but quite frankly, the council has been on record many times supporting comprehensive immigration reform. But there's no time like the present, given the circumstances of the last presidential election, where even some in the Republican Party who have often fought off efforts to have comprehensive immigration reform have now come to realize, whether it's for political reasons or other reasons, the importance of embracing our immigrants to this country. Economically, we all know how much the country will benefit should we have immigration reform. But now, for political reasons, I think some from the other party have now come to realize it makes sense for them if we embrace all Americans and not just some. So the timing is ripe. These windows of opportunity are rare. The window is open right now. We, as a country, should take advantage of this opportunity. And here in the city of Los Angeles, although we've often put out these resolutions, right now is the right time to once again reassert ourselves, to say where we stand in a city that is over 45, even 50% foreign-born, to say that our population matters in this country. So thank you to all the advocates, to the people who've often been fighting for many, many years. You know, like the civil rights movement, it wasn't one year, it was in two years. It was years and years and years of struggle. And this is a struggle that hopefully the time is right for us. So thank you to all. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and the others who brought this forward. And the Office of Immigrant Affairs, it only makes sense that should we, at a national level, move forward, that we have some here locally to help address that issue as well. So muchisimas gracias adelante y el sueño americano todavía vive y con esta reforma que tenemos ojalá que la tenemos para todos nuestros hijos y nuestros amigos y tíos y todo lo que tenemos. Muchísimas gracias.
Okay. All right. Let's see no one else on the queue. Let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, congratulations. Muchas gracias por venir. Felicidades. Mr. Clerk, our next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 14, called special by Councilmember Bustagüero and for cards.
Okay, we do have a couple of cards on this item. I'd like to call up Arnold Sacks.
Can you do cards first?
Daniel Jones. And then Dalhouse Dude. Arnold Sacks, please come on up.
Yeah, I'm coming here. Oh, okay.
No problem.
One shot.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, or good morning, Arnold Sacks. You want to establish an ad hoc committee on gang violence. Maybe you might have been paying attention, maybe you might not have been paying attention to this activity that just took place in council chambers regarding establishing an Office of Immigrant Affairs. The reason I bring this up is because I could almost swear that the mayor, Villarreal Gosa, established his gang czar like three years ago, maybe longer, not much longer. So, three years ago, he establishes the gang czar. What's the council been doing? Well, we have a lot of presentations, which is a good thing, but have you done anything about the gangs? So your speed to establish this gang czar rivals your speed to establish this Office of Immigration Affairs. What's to be done? Well, we could have another presentation, that'll work. But again, my concern is, why you didn't act when the mayor established the gang czar to work in concert with the ad hoc committee on gangs? Why not do that? Why not reestablish new priorities for the council instead of goose-stepping right along with whatever the mayor wants or whoever owns the city at the time their policies are? But the fact that, it galls me no end to hear you rush to pat yourselves on the back regarding your actions in the Office of Immigration Affairs when it takes three years and how many killings to establish a gang czar.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Juan Dalhouse Dude. Please come on up. Mr. Jones.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Jones. I'm just concerned about one piece of technical equipment that suppression and prevention, and you all know what I'm talking about, it's the stingray equipment that's out there. It's just totally unconscionable as to why it's even out there, if it's even real. The threat of it even being out there on the street makes it real. I'm speaking from a son, you know, my father used to drop nuclear bombs for the United States Air Force. Look, there's an absolute relativity as far as what he was going to put up with my behavior. I speak from a heritage of, well, my grandfather's name was Paul Jones.
Mr. President, I don't think he's talking about the gang, ad hoc gang committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm waiting for general public comments. Look, the stingray equipment is an absolute travesty to everybody's privacy. It's going to be a part of your overall comprehension on gangs, was to keep that equipment from going up into the rich, white gang area or the more lucrative areas of our society. It's going to, that piece of stingray equipment is going to capture all kinds of, you know, information that's legal, that's proprietary to people's lives, whether they want to interrupt it or intercept it or not. The judge is going to look at anything that is obtained through that piece of equipment and throw it out. The justification for being there in the first place is wrong, okay? I'm just worried about the word "all." And I'm not going to stop talking about stingray, or the Fusion Center, or SARS, or the fact that every single one of you, well, general public comments.
Thank you very much. So Dude?
Well, I heard that a few families have been standing on a corner as we Mexicans do. We like to kind of socialize out on the street, you know? We're not like our counterparts here that sit down at home and watch TV, but we like to actually communicate with each other on the street. But the minute you have like four, five people, the LAPD will come up and say, hey, you're a gang! You know? Just because we like to talk in groups. See? We are not part of this nicely be quiet, do not speak too loud society. We are orators. We, the Mexicans, like to gesticulate and make signs and do things. And because we gather in numbers, sometimes we're called a gang. But who is the biggest gang? The LAPD. Who is the other biggest gang? City Hall. So gang violence comes in all forms. You know, police brutality would be qualified for gang violence. And the brutal laws that you pass against the people for whatever reason, and they lose their business and everything, that is also gang violence. It's just another type of gang violence, you know? You don't go and duke it out, but you write it. You write a lot of laws that are gang violent to the people. And if the people do not behave in a certain way, you can call them a gang. So, gang violence?
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, I believe you're out of time. So, seeing no one else on the queue. Bustagüero, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Thank you very much. On this item, colleagues, as you are well aware, our former colleague Congressman Tony Cardenas often took a lead on these issues of juvenile justice, gang intervention, prevention, gang violence. And I know he's going to do the same on the federal level. And before he left for Washington, he asked if I would consider taking this issue on and becoming the point person on city council. And I know, based on my experience in working day in, day out with gang interventionists across the city, we owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to our gang interventionists in the city who are responsible or who've been helpful in reducing violent crime across the city of Los Angeles. And I know we've made significant progress in reducing gang violence over the past several years, and I'm committed to ensuring that continues. I want to thank the mayor and the grid office for continuing that effort in reducing violent crime across the city with the Summer Nightlight program. And I'd like to thank council president for agreeing to create this ad hoc committee and to appoint me as the chairperson. And I ask for your I-vote and continue to thank Congressman Tony Cardenas for just again being in the forefront here in the city, and now he'll be doing the same on the federal level. Thank you.
Councilor Englander.
Yeah, I just wanted to stand with my colleague, Joe Bustagüero, and thank him for moving this forward as well. This is critically important. If we look at right now, as the Chair of Public Safety, and I'm looking at crime stats every day, and we all hear the numbers that it's the lowest crime that we've seen certainly in our lifetime here in Los Angeles, and in no part it's because of all the other programs, not only with LAPD but outside of LAPD as well, and the intervention-prevention programs. I remember not too long ago, when you picked up the Daily News, every day, they had it, and Mr. Alakon will remember this as well, because this was just back in the 90s, you would see above the fold front page every single day, gang capital of the world, Los Angeles, number one. And it's no longer there. And because of the intervention programs, the prevention programs, a lot of the work that folks around here have done as well, but it's because of that. And so bringing this back is critically important. We know that AV 109 is going to drive some of those numbers up again. We know we've got 11,000, 11,000 inmates that have been released early from prison because of realignment here in the county. And that's going to affect all of us. And while we struggle with the budget, and it's going to be very difficult to keep the officers, we do currently have even on patrol because of all the other issues with overtime and everything else, we've got to think outside the box, and we've got to ensure that we support those other programs, PALS and Jeopardy and all the other ones that help prevent and give these at-risk youths an opportunity to succeed. So I urge your I-vote as well, and I want to thank Joe for bringing this forward. It's critically important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, I must share with you that we are down to 10 members. Hang on tight. We have one more item to get through. That way, we can finish the council business. So please hang in there. We're down to barely a quorum. Let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Next item?
That brings us to item 16, called special for Councilmember Coretts and for cards.
Councilmember Coretts, you'd like to speak first or you'd like to public comment?
You can have the comment first.
Okay. Arnold Sacks? You're out of time, Mr. Sacks. John Ross, out of sex. Morgan Peters? Morgan Peters? Morgan Peters, are you here? Okay, Mr. Dalhouse Dude? One minute, sir. You have one minute left.
Well, it's a source of food. I don't know, I don't know how you're going to feed the masses in the future if you don't do something about genetically engineering animals. If they are proven to not cause any harm to human consumption, that's what I have heard, why would you even bother with it? You are not, you're not the engineers that are producing more food for people. What would we do with all those chicken coops that we have and all the, all those cows and things, you know? Somebody has to produce food for people. And if you keep restricting things before you know what it's all about, I don't think we're doing a good thing. So I'm for anything that, you know...
Thank you very much. Alexandra Nagy? I apologize, I mispronounced her name.
Hello, last name Nagy. My name is Alexandra Nagy. I'm here with Food and Water Watch. Okay, my name is Alexandra Nagy. I'm here with Food and Water Watch. Dear Councilmember Coretts, Food and Water Watch is a consumer advocacy organization working to protect our food supply, is pleased with your support for the resolution that opposes the Food and Drug Administration's approval of genetically engineered salmon in the United States. We have serious concerns about the risks of genetically engineered salmon on human health. There has never been genetically engineered meat in the food supply before, and Aqua Bounty's laboratory-created salmon has not undergone the necessary independent testing to assure its safety for human consumption. Research already indicates that the engineered salmon product will be lower in omega-3s and higher in growth hormones that have been linked to cancer, and may be higher in contaminants like mercury and PCVs. Additionally, we are concerned about the threat of genetically engineered salmon to wild fish populations and to wild Pacific salmon populations in particular. Wild Pacific salmon is a vital economic and public resource for commercial, recreational, and subsistence fishing communities, and commercial fishing brings in billions of dollars to the California economy each year. Displacement of the market for wild salmon caused by confusion over Aqua Bounty's genetically engineered counterpart in the market could devastate fishing communities, just as the introduction of farmed salmon into the marketplace did in the 1990s. Even worse, an escape of this risky creature into Pacific waters could have a long-term impact on the health of West Coast fish populations, whether they are salmon or not, as Aqua Bounty's salmon is demonstrated to be more aggressive in seeking food and shelter than wild fish. We applaud you for your leadership on this important issue.
Thank you. Connor Everts?
Good afternoon, sir.
Afternoon. Connor Everts, Southern California Watershed Alliance. I am in support of this resolution. Genetically engineered salmon, what we're talking about here is really what we call Frankenfish. It's mixing Pacific Coast salmon and Atlantic salmon, which are very different, with a fish called a pout, which is more like an eel, for rapid growth. So while supporting commercial fishermen in Northern California, and we've actually had a good year, and what Los Angeles does here in Southern California to save water actually helps our commercial fishermen and salmon to the north. It's hard to imagine, my grandfather once caught salmon wild off the coast of Southern California, but he did. We need to maintain these fisheries, not invest in one company's profit, and give more time to study for this. So I support this resolution. I'd also say restaurants in Los Angeles have picked up on the idea of wild versus farmed salmon and the implications there, and we need to support that as well. And lastly, I want to thank you all for the new landscaping around City Hall and that change from the turf. That's just one step, but a good example. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on the queue, Councilmember Coretts. Do you have about four other persons you'd like to close, you'd like to open? It's up to you.
Okay, I will, I'll try to speak on this briefly. Some of this is already mentioned. In December, under the cover of the holidays, the FDA approved a new creature, which is a combination of a salmon and an eel. This product is creating quite a bit of concern, especially in my district, because the FDA doesn't require that these genetically engineered salmon be labeled, which presents a religious observance problem, both for Jews and Muslims, because eel is not kosher, and these are, I don't know exactly what you'd call them, half-eel, half-salmon, but they definitely are not acceptable for the Orthodox community and for the Muslim community. What else isn't kosher is that these genetically altered salmon are a serious threat to wild salmon stocks. If they escape from fish farms, they're larger and more aggressive and faster, and they will compete with the real salmon. The FDA has refused to require rigorous, independent scientific testing to adequately protect the economic and cultural integrity of our fishing protect the economic and cultural integrity of our fishing communities on the West Coast. The National Academy of Sciences notes that a release of just 60 of these genetically altered salmon/eels into a wild population of 60,000 normal salmon would lead to the extinction of the wild population in less than 40 fish generations. And most importantly, we don't know what this manufactured, man-made product will do to our bodies when we eat it. The FDA has not required any kind of studies. It's time, it's time to stop experimenting on human beings and on the planet. We need to do no harm first, not the other way around. And so I believe we have to oppose the approval of this genetically altered salmon/eel fish, and I urge your vote for that, this resolution to do just that. And also, I'd like to ask that we move the CLA report as well that is attached to the council file.
Thank you, sir. We have Counsel Rosendahl and Counsel Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I co-sign this with Mr. Coretts. Remember, in this resolution, there are three paragraphs that are real clear. The FDA has not conducted any safety testing and has generally neglected to adequately address serious concerns about the safety of consuming salmon that has been genetically engineered to produce growth hormones at all times, allowing it to grow faster and bigger than the natural salmon. Scientists have predicted that the introduction of GE salmon into populations of native salmons could have severe detrimental ecological and economic impact on coastal communities whose livelihood depends heavily on fishing, including the devastation of populations of native salmon, as well as other fish and marine mammals that feed on native salmon populations. Saying this really clearly points out that in this resolution, we oppose any action by the Food and Drug Administration to approve genetically engineered salmon and support for any legislation that would prohibit the Food and Drug Administration from such an approval. How could they even do it without investigating and understanding the health implication? So obviously, this motion makes sense. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Labange? Counsel Labange?
Just a question for the CLA. It's so important that we look at our food chain, you know, and what goes on here. That committee, was anyone there from the fishing industry at all? Do we know? I know, but as it was being waived, was there anybody from the food industry? I'm asking. Here's a question I'd just like to ask in the future. We should invite the fishing industry here. We should invite the people who are trying to make this change, because it's important for them to get on the public record when they say something is right or wrong. So I understand what Mr. Coretts and Mr. Rosendahl are saying, but I know we waive it, we do a motion, and it goes somewhere, but I think we should ask the CLA at some period of time to look at this. You know, just like all water is not necessarily tested the same as all water DWP is. DWP has certain requirements by law. MWD has certain requirements by law, but in some cases, people, bottled water, don't have any requirements. I would just say it's important that we get this stuff on the record for the CLA, Mr. Miller, for the future on that. Thank you very much. I just was salivating about salmon right now, Mr. Coretts, and now every time I look at it, I'm going to think something different now, but I...
Counsel Labange, perhaps, in coordination with the author of the motion, have a report back on the issues you're raising in committee?
Well, I think we should. We should look at that, have a discussion, and our health committee too, Mr. Alarcon, as well.
Counselor Coretts?
Thanks.
You on the queue to close?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think we would love to have a further discussion on this, but we obviously can't delay this item, because there's actually a February 25 deadline for comments, and thus, we asked it to be waived out, and the item will have to go forthwith along with the CLA's report, which I'll ask as soon as this is passed.
Great. Okay, so we'll see no one else on the queue?
Mr. President, for clarification, is there a second to Mr. Coretts's motion to adopt the CLA recommendations in addition to the resolution?
Yes, there is a second. So we're ready to open the row? Let's open the row? Close the row? And tally the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, so that moves forward, and that was called forthwith? Yes, forthwith.
Mr. President, that brings us to general public comment.
Okay, general public comment. Daniel Jones? And John Walsh?
Good, I got the bugs worked out. About to comment on the salmon squid thing, leave my ancestors a long way. Let's see. Going back that far, the American Revolution was not an example of what went right in with this country, it's an example of what went wrong. We stopped talking to each other. My father said, "You can't fight City Hall. You ask them or force them to fight, to fight." There's a $32.5 million fight that's going to happen. I would like to hear Wendy Grule come down here and explain the position of the city as to what that recommendation is all about. I would like to have that man standing over there talking to Councilmember Parks right there, the man that authored and co-wrote and built the business model for the $32.5 million plan, and he sat right there, and Jan Parks asked him a question as far as what's the justification for $32.5 million? And he said, "Well, to tell you the truth, Code, I don't know what we're going to do with the $32.5 million." That was a, that was a defraction, a deflection. He knows exactly what they're going to do with that $32.5 million. They're going to spend it on themselves, because the word nonprofit means you can't spend anything more than $32.1 million, $32.5 million plus a dollar. Where are we on this one? What's the justification for the half-cent sales tax? I'm going to explain something. I have my right to have my grievances redressed. The word redress is a two-process word. You haven't addressed, that's six months of it in this record. Now I'm going to redress it either with the federal bill of complaint?
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is John Walsh. Then we have Dahlhouse-Dude?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I don't want to disturb Mr. Garcetti, sitting over here talking to Mr. Labange out of his seat. Oh, keep on talking, that's fine. I'd like to point out that the, the poll that just came out, the ABC poll, this is not a phony poll, a push poll. This shows that after 16, 12 years as a city councilman, Garcetti, he isn't getting, he is getting only 26% of the vote for mayor. He did his commercial, it was the worst damn commercial I ever saw. He's sitting there, he's standing there like this with his hands at a public park, and he's wearing about a $900 sweater. They spent a fortune on that commercial, it hasn't moved the polls. What is going to happen is Garcetti and Grule, a little lower over there, Mr. Garcetti, they're talking about campaign contributions. The polls will not move, it will be Garcetti and Grule, Jan Perry's vote, the black community will go behind Grule because Garcetti is a sexist and a, and basically, we're going to have a next, this is the next big woman mayor in the history of Los Angeles, first in Los Angeles, the third big city mayor after Feinstein and Jane Byrne in Chicago. I'd like to point out, it's been a bad week for rape victims. A tourist raped Friday, last Friday at 9:00 PM on the Michael Jackson star, 6900, and the eve, most worst, a tourist found stuffed in the water tower of the Hotel Cecil, and the only, for two weeks it was there, where is the LAPD? The, they found the body because the water pressure went down. Japanese tourists, don't come to this country, tourists, it is dangerous. You'll end up in a water tower, or you'll end up raped on Hollywood Boulevard. Stay away.
Thank you very much. The panel, Dahlhouse-Dude, then Arnold Sacks?
Yes, this is not the prettiest or the least violent city in the world. We're talking about genetically engineered food for one reason. Nobody has a place to grow their own food, natural food. Do you realize when you put people in apartment houses, they cannot grow their own food, and they wind up eating this genetically engineered food? Well, why? We all have to eat, and if we cannot produce our own food, I mean, even in small proportions, all we need is somebody producing an orange tree, somebody producing an avocado tree. We, human beings, could be much better off if we all had our own little location where no policeman can come and kick us out, where no sheriff department can come and throw all our things on the street. You know? We need to change the stupid real estate laws, so that the city is not blaming the county for throwing people out, and the county is not blaming the city for throwing people out. Do you understand what I'm talking about? Changing the real estate laws. Read my book, The United World of Free and Clear. I am running for District 11. I will be the next councilman for District 11, and the whole city council is going to have to answer to me about housing. I don't give a hoot about any other issue.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks?
Oh, this is, this is great. Thank you. Losing time, that's really wonderful. I'm glad that the council is taking action on genetically engineered food. Look how much time they wasted not pursuing the genetically engineered combination between a rat and a snake. Now, council chambers is filled with, oh, excuse me, with politicians, because that's what you get when you genetically cross rats and snakes. But who knows? Leadership is leadership. Maybe to help you make a decision in this year's mayoral elections, I would suggest you pick up a copy, go old school. Pick up a copy of the Temptation song, "Can't Get Next to You." You will hear a list of promises to be made with one exception, "Can't Get Next to You." But if you listen to that song, you listen to old-school coolness instead of listening to politician rhetoric. Little bit of an advantage. I hope and strongly suggest you don't vote for any of the people that are sitting in elected office right now, including state legislators, because you can see, if you pick up newspapers and read about how dysfunctional the California legislation is, why would you want to bring those people down to run your city? Conversely, when you see some of the things that are run, not necessarily what is done, but what isn't done by sitting city council elected officials. Unfortunately, because some of my time was used up, I'm out of time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Samantha Smith. Samantha Smith, disrupting the meeting. Samantha Smith?
Hello. My name's Samantha, and I would like to request your undivided attention for the next two minutes. There are proposals for further gun regulations, and I'm here to speak against these regulations that are anti-American proposals. They impose our rights and disrespect the Constitution that my fathers died for, and I'm also here to say that the US banks need to be brought to justice regarding Holder versus HSBC, and they must be prosecuted for the largest drug-terrorism-money scandal of all time. And I'm speaking out against the anti-gun UN meeting next month, as well as all tyrannical acts of the federal government upon American people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ernest Elmore?
My name is Ernest Elmore. I am a stakeholder in Herb Weston's district. I'm also the former producer of a TV show that was on Comcast Cable TV several years ago called The Justice Channel, until our former governor, Eric Schwarzenegger, shut down all the public access throughout the state of California. Now, I have some questions before I begin. Also, I want to mention my website, ForgottenAmericans.org, and TheJusticeChannel.blogspot.com. I'm also a founder of an organization called The Forgotten Americans Network. Now, I have a few questions before I begin my presentation. First of all, what has Jan Perry said that she's going to do for black Americans while she's running for office? Can anybody name one thing? What has Bernard Parks said he's going to do for black Americans as a politician on the city council? Anybody? Now, you're allowing all these, Obama says there's 12 million illegal aliens that they're going to give amnesty to, which is a lie, because there's more than 12 million illegal alien Hispanics in Los Angeles, in the city of Los Angeles. How come you don't let Africans immigrate over here? 12 million Africans and let them move right up into middle class, let them dominate LAPD and the Sheriff's Department, like you have allowed the Hispanics? Now, in light of the revelations that came out with the Christopher Dorner situation, I am calling for the arrest and conviction of Chief Beck.
Thank you, sir. That concludes public comments. Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Members? Council colleagues? Any announcements? Counsel Labange?
Our great city clerk's office has a hot dog sale this afternoon. All the council deputies are invited, and all council members and staff, over to the city clerk's office, $5, and it raises money for a good cause. Also, I'd like to introduce a great Pulitzer Prize-winning photographer, Nick Ut. Nick Ut's right here, he's in our chamber shooting for the AP. Nick took a most famous photograph, and for those of us of the age, knew that that photograph helped end the war in Vietnam. It was the young lady who unfortunately, without clothes, running down that highway in Cambodia with the napalm bomb in the background. Nick Ut, great cameraman, great photographer, Nicky.
Thank you, Counsel Labange. Any announcements? Singing, adjourning motions? Please stand. We're in the chamber, please stand. Counsel Labange, adjourning motion?
Dorothy Gould, the mother of David Gould and her, Mark Gould, two great sons, is joined in heaven now with her husband, Joe Gould. Dorothy Gould was a great resident of the 4th District. She lived in the Silver Lake District. She and my mom were great friends. She lived on Meadow Valley Terrace, right there at Drury Lane, and both Mark and David were in the same Boy Scout troop, Troop 527, and their father, who preceded Dorothy in death, was our scout master. Years ago, our family's got to be known so well when one of my older brothers landed his motorcycle in the front lawn of the Gould family. Dorothy Gould loved, loved this city, loved people, loved her friends, and was very inspirational. She lived in the Windsor Square District, was active even in her late years also in walking and being out in the community. She will be sorely missed, and I ask for adjourned memory of Dorothy Gould, the father of both Mark and David, and other grandchildren as well, Gould, and now preceded her death by her, and now rejoined by her husband, Joseph.
Thank you, Counsel Labange. Counselor Coretts?
I'd like to second that and also just say that, of course, she was the mother of my very good friend, David Gould, who was treasurer to many folks here, and a good friend of mine for 40 years as well, so, and of course, his mother and father were both wonderful people, and thank you for adjourning in her memory.
Counselor Garcetti?
I didn't realize that's who it was. I taught her granddaughter, or his granddaughter and her granddaughter, Chandra Schenkengould, at Occidental, so I could be added to that too. Thanks.
Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great day.